Thank you for coming tonight. Assuming to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws in 1975, this meeting is what newly advertised as our press issue of August 1st, 2005, on which the clerks and the townships and boroughs in the regional high school district have been to the notified requirements of the post-reading numbers that have been met. Need a motion for the...
Motion.
Second? Any discussion? Please, Mr. Voice.
Mr. Assentol.
Present.
Mr. Bruno.
Present.
This is a vote on the way.
Almena.
Yes.
Present too.
Mr. Assentol.
Present on account of having at the last board meeting.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Mrs. Canaria.
Yes.
Mr. Corolla.
Yes.
Mrs. Frankbauer.
Yes.
Mr. Flatter.
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera.
Yes.
Mr. Roses.
Yes.
Okay, we need pictures on file of the board secretary, superintendent.
So we're gonna open the evening, I'd like to welcome Mr. Kuntafa and the Rebel Yell.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you are able, please rise for the singing of the National Anthem.
For those who don't know Joe Kuntafa, he's excellent.
Thank you, Joe.
Before we get started this evening, I'd like to ask the audience if we could observe a moment of silence for passing Jay Morgan, the mayor of Farmingdale, who died after battle with cancer at the age of 53 about a week and a half ago. Thank you. So we are going to open up with our student recognition. I believe this is about as many normal people we get in normal board meeting, right? They all come out through the board meetings. But just a few logistical rules, so the space is real tight up here, so I'll call the principals and seekers up, and especially if you have a large group, just call the entire group up first so that they can line up and be recognized, and then do the names. Sometimes students don't sit next to each other when we start calling names and folks are coming out, and we don't want to miss anybody to receive their accolades. So we are going to open the evening with Freehold Township High School. Mrs. Higley?
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Higley, Principal of Freehold Township High School. First, I would like to congratulate all the students who are in attendance tonight, who are being recognized for their outstanding achievements. I'd also like to thank their parents for all the support they provide to our students that make an evening like this possible. We are proud of how well the students in the Freehold Regional High School District perform on the SAT. This is nationally normed test, and we have quite a few students in the district who receive a perfect score of 800 on one or more of the sections. This affords our students the opportunity to attend many prestigious colleges and universities. I am proud to recognize the following students from FTHS and thank them for their hard work. Sarah Chowdhury. James Kabula. And Jawad Lamah. Sarah received a perfect score in reading in October 2015. James received a perfect score in reading in March 2015 and again in November 2015. And Jawad received a perfect score in math in June 2015. Congratulations. I have three Eagle Scouts I will be recognizing tonight, Kyle, Luke, and Kevin, would please come down? The fact that a boy is an Eagle Scout has always carried with it a special significance, not only in scouting, but also as he enters higher education, business, or industry and community service. The award is a performance-based achievement whose standards have been well-maintained over the years. Not every boy who joins a Boy Scout troop earns the Eagle Scout rank. Only about 5% of all Boy Scouts do so. To earn the Eagle Scout rank, a boy must fulfill requirements in the areas of leadership, service, and outdoor skills. A number of specific skills are required to advance through the ranks. To advance, a scout must pass specific tests that are organized by requirement and merit badges. Merit badges signify the mastery of certain outdoor skills, as well as helping boys increase their skill in an area of personal interest. Of the 130-plus merit badges available, a total of 21 must be earned to qualify for Eagle Scout, with 13 badges specifically required. Kyle Simon became an Eagle Scout, and it takes being a leader and very hard work, he said. He started Boy Scouts in the 5th grade and has now finished in the 12th grade. Becoming an Eagle Scout needed many hours of service, various merit badges, along with his project. Kyle's project was done at Freehold Township High School on the disc golf course, where he installed disc golf tees at the beginning of each hall. The project took two days of fundraising and two days of installing the actual golf tees themselves. He was able to complete this project with help of friends, family, and fellow scouts. Luke began scouting also as a Tiger Plust. He was patrol leader twice, assistant patrol leader, troop guide, senior patrol leader, and junior assistant scoutmaster. As a senior patrol leader, he basically ran the troop along with the scoutmaster. After becoming junior, he worked on his Eagle Scout project. His project involved putting in a new sign, a new flagpole, and retaining wall around the sign with bushes and trees. All this took place at Emmanuel Bible Church. The cost of the project was about $8,000, and Luke alone putting in over 45 hours doing all the work himself. All these experiences have contributed to Luke's leadership abilities. Kevin started his career also learning at a young age of Boy Scouts. He also has held up every leadership position one can hold, as well as staffing and leading a one-week-long leadership course titled "The National Youth Leadership Training." His scouting experiences have taken many places, including Mexico, the Florida Keys, West Virginia, and all around the tri-state area. His Eagle project in 2015, which was rebuilding and remodeling the picnic area in Winfield Park in addition to installing another bench. He states that scouting is everything to him, and he is extremely happy and proud of his accomplishments. Christopher Pulick? We'd like to congratulate Junior Christopher Pulick. Christopher participated in the 2015-2016 Library Congress Letters about literature contest. Christopher wrote a letter to J.R.R. Tolkien, and he received first place in Level 3 New Jersey out of 2,000 entries. Christopher's letter has been sent to Washington DC to now compete at the national level. Saruthi? Freehold Township's Saruthi Badapati has been given the opportunity to explore her passion for service, medicine, and agriculture at Tufts University this summer through a USDA Wallace Carver Fellowship. Saruthi is part of our Animal Botanical Science Academy. She has also been selected to be a New Jersey delegate at the Global National Institute in Des Moines, Iowa. Congratulations. Shauna? Forensics is Township's Speech and Debate Team, with over 100 competitive talented students. Throughout the year, the team competes at local tournaments, also participating at the national level. Categories include monologues, duos, original speeches, and interpretations of prose, poetry, or drama. Anyone likes to express themselves, perform, or argue, or just talk a lot greatly enjoys speech and debate. A longstanding tradition at Freehold Township, the team has had great success at both state and local levels. We'd like to break in on Shauna, who became New Jersey Forensics Tournament Champion in Informative Speaking, and informative speaking competitors craft a speech using evidence, logic, and optional visual aid, who will be competing in the Nationals in Salt Lake City this summer. Antoinette and Simone? We have two FCCLA members who see first-place gold medals at the state leadership contests. FCCLA stands for Family, Career, Community Leaders of America. It is the ultimate leadership experience. It is a dynamic and effective national youth organization that helps young men and women become leaders and address important personal, family, work, and societal issues through family and consumer science education. Congrats to Antoinette, who had first-place gold medal in the Nutrition and Wellness Event. For this event, Antoinette tracked and analyzed her food intake and physical activity for a period of time. Through extended research, she determined and set goals and strategies for improving her overall health. To represent her findings, Antoinette created a 40-page portfolio and gave a 10-minute oral presentation. Simone also won first-place gold medal in the Toys at Teach Event. Not only did Simone own a first place, but she actually earned a perfect score, which is rarely achieved. For this event, a student had to design, build, and demonstrate an original handmade toy, which provided learning and play for children. The toy was to reconstruct the common everyday household items, meet safety guidelines, and be easy to carry and use. Simone created a game out of recycled cardboard that provided word learning, sentence structure, and basic math skills for children. Congratulations. And now I'd like to introduce Mr. Patrick McAvoy, who will recognize additional Freehold Township recipients.
Thank you, Mrs. Higley, and congrats again to everyone. First off, we are gonna start off with the band. Freehold Township cannot be more proud of our students' music accomplishments this past winter. First off, we're gonna discuss the Allshore Jazz Band. So Matthew Gallego, Matthew Shonopoff, Eugene Vinkowski, and Kevin Arispana, if you could come up right now. On Tuesday... Come on up, guys. On Tuesday, uh... January 19th and January 27th, several students from the Freehold Regional High School District from Freehold Township attended the auditions and open auditions for the Allshore Jazz Band. Students came from Monmouth and Ocean Counties to compete, to be in a great ensemble. We would like to congratulate these FTHS students who won their auditions. Matthew got the trumpet, Matthew Shonopoff the trombone, Eugene the trumpet, and Kevin the trumpet. Congrats. All right. Next one, Allshore Symphonic Band. On Tuesday... February 23rd, FTHS hosted the Allshore Symphonic Band Auditions. Over 250 students from the Shore Conference competed for a position in this successful ensemble. Congratulations to the following students who won their auditions for the Allshore Symphonic Band. So once I say your name, just please come up. Abigail Dupree. For principal flute. Pamela Alitski for the flute, and she also was the third highest scorer in the shore. We have Max Torres for the clarinet. If you are here, you can't come up. We have Aslan Ghanid for the clarinet. Michael Boney for the clarinet. William Aramondo for clarinet. Caitlin Potter for bass clarinet. Alice Earhart for the baritone saxophone. Matthew Gallego for the trumpet. Alexandra Hagar for the trumpet. Christopher Garrett for the principal horn, who was number one in the shore. We have Matthew Shonopoff for the principal trombone and number one in the shore. Julia Felton for trombone. Gianni Garrett for the euphonium. Andrew DePass for the tuba. Suara Kuror for the mallets. Megan Piccolo for the clarinet. A round of applause for all of them. According to our band director, Mr. Ed Gatzek, that I cannot stress enough how significant this year's achievements have been in terms of instrumental music and students' honors ensembles auditions, so congrats again. All right, Dominic Scalia and Andrew DePass, please come up. These two, on Allstate Band and Orchestra, on February 4th, several students from the FRHSD auditioned for the Allstate Band and Orchestra. Students must qualify to auditions for this ensemble by first winning their auditions for the CJMBA Region 2 Band. The pool of applicants for Allstate is literally the best of the best. Two FTHS students won their auditions, and they are Dominic Scalia and Andrew DePass. All right, can Pete Nielsen and John Carroll please come up? All right, Pete and John are representatives from our FTHS baseball team. FRHSD is always proud of any team that can attain a sportsmanship award. The Shore Umpire Association met this February to review sportsmanship from last year's accomplishments, and was voted by them and the recipient of ours team, the Association's Sportsmanship, from Monmouth County. So for the baseball team, thank you so much for your leadership, that makes us the school proud. Thanks again. Mike Plaska, can you please come up? All right, Mike Plaska is one of our wrestlers. First place in the district at the 126 pounds. He had a record of 29 to 4. According to his coaches, he's a great captain and a great kid, a perfect student athlete. He will be wrestling at TCNJ this fall. Can Jake Kone please come up? All right, Jake Kone is a representative of Winter Track. Jake had an amazing Winter Track season. He is the Monmouth County Title Champion in the 3200 meter, is a Central Jersey Group 4 Champion in the 3200 meters, he is the Group 4 Champion in the 3200 meters, he won the First Team All Group 4, Second Team Allstate, and Jake will be attending Yukon in the fall. That wasn't fast enough. All right, can Kira Roche please come up? All right, Kira here had an amazing Winter Track season as well. Kira is the Monmouth County Championship, she won the Monmouth County Championship in the 600-meter run, and broke all-time meet county and Shore Conference records, running of 4 minutes and 51... excuse me, yeah, 4 minutes and 51 seconds during that meet. She is the Central Jersey Group 4 State Champ in the 800 meter, she is the Central Jersey Group 4 State Champ in the 1600 meter, she is the Group 4 State Champ in the 1600 meter. Round of applause. Kira, don't leave yet. Kira also placed second at the Meetup Championships, Meetup Champions in the 1600 meter run, and placed a new Monmouth County and Shore Conference record time. She is named Third Team Allstate and First Team Group 4. Kira was also invited and accepted an invitation to compete in the No-Rose Games last February 20th. This is the most prestigious indoor track meet in the world. She will be competing in the High School Girls Mile Run Championship. Kira will also be attending Cornell in the fall. All right, thank you very much, and have a good rest of the night.
All right, I'd like to call up Mr. Simon from Coltsneck High School. I do bleed a little blue with my kids at Township also, so congratulations to all of you, and congratulations to everyone here tonight, being recognized, and those who aren't here being recognized. As I know that I certainly wish in high school that they had these kind of nights to really celebrate all of the success, academic, athletic, extracurricular. We have so many, many talented students in this district, I think it's great that the Superintendent and the Board of Education take the time out at least three nights a year to do this. So let's get started with Coltsneck High School's recognition. We've had a banner year, Mr. Ornea was gonna take over a little while to talk about all our athletic accomplishments. It's probably been a year like no other in Coltsneck High School history. But I'm gonna start with a recognition that is near and dear to my heart, and that is gonna be talking about the two Eagle Scouts of our own at Coltsneck High School. One is not here, but I'm gonna ask Colton Bowe to come on up. Colton, join us up here. As an Eagle Scout myself, I certainly can attest to the time and effort that goes in having a son recognized here tonight as well, my third son, I'm one of five brothers, and between all of the nephews and grandchildren, and we have a pretty good streak going, and we have about 13 right now in the family, and still going strong. So these projects are no small undertaking, and anyone who's been involved in scouting at any... understands that. The first one I'm gonna read is Noah Baker. Noah's not here tonight, but I did wanna share as well, and I promised him I'd bring him home a medal. Noah built and installed four outdoor game tables at the Marlboro Swim Club. The tables are weatherproof. He designed the tables, they organized and led a group of 12 people to build the tables. They received donations of materials from various vendors from throughout Monmouth County. Noah has not yet chosen university he will attend next year, but he's choosing between UDL, University of New Haven, Rowan, and Ramaka. Now, Colton, who's here tonight, looking dapper in his uniform. Colton organized and led a group of 30 people to help implement his vision of alterations to the baseball field at Five Points Park. The new alterations will provide multiple levels of baseball, the opportunity to play on the field. Colton's plan included rebuilding the pitcher's mound, installing new bases, and resurfacing the infield. Congratulations, Colton. Well done. I'd like to call down the following five students from our Coltsneck music program: David Winograd, Joey Scilia, Gabrielle Greco, Nick Defabulous, and Mark Lewis. I know a few of you at least are here, right? Come on down, guys. All right, so we'll recognize two, and I need three medals to go, please. These students all from Coltsneck High School, all achieved statuses Allshore Jazz Band. David is not here tonight, David is tenor sax, Allshore Jazz, and baritone sax, Allshore Symphony. Joey is tenor sax, Gabrielle alto sax, Nick drums, and Mark drums. So congratulations to all five of our Allshore Jazz Bands. We didn't rehearse, it's okay. All right, the next group I'd like to call down, the following five ROTC cadets: Michael Fluff, Shane Hadley, Jake Chesson, Kristen Shandall, and Colton Bowe. Five of them are here tonight, I know Colton is. Did Colton leave? And none of the others are here, huh? All right, well, that's all right, I'm gonna brag about them anyway, these five. These five cadets earned a district medal for leading our orienteering team to the NJROTC Area 4 Championship in October. The description of what they did, just to have some idea, Orienteering is a competitive international sport, but you didn't know that, that is an event in the World Games. Combines racing with land navigation through diverse and unfamiliar terrain. It is a timed race in which individual participants have provided a specially-created detailed map, and require to select routes that will allow them to quickly navigate to and identify their designated control points in sequence. The length of championship courses generally are between 5K and 10K, requiring competitors to also be in top physical condition. So again, these five students earned the district medal for leading our orienteering team to the Area 4 Championship in October. Congratulations. Now, the next group, I'm gonna rattle off 41 names as quickly as I can. A large majority of them are here, but wait until you hear the accomplishments of this group of cadets. So here we go, I'm not gonna do it in one breath. EJ Alvaladeo, Lucas Alvaladeo, Patrick Bowen, Anthony Balone, Nicole Datto, Matthew Deisler, Giovanni Demuth, Connor Doyle, Natalie Farperan, Kyle Flanagan, Emily Fluff, Justin Hanawal, Elizabeth Heath, Sarah Heath, Tyler Higley, Grace Hugel, Evan Hymane, Richard Kemble, Owen Koush, Amanda Marinello, Sabrina Martinez, Ian McGellaght, Kyle McGellaght, Amy McGee, Holly McGovern, James McNamara, Jake McTeague, Samantha Malika, Matthew Matola, Ariana Mascara, Gregory Penzac, Louis Cregola, Elizabeth Colico, Lindsay Press, Jamie Prestid... Prestidjocamo, right? Okay, I practiced that one there. Nicholas Rondanella, Julia Safer, Kristen Shandall, Taylor Shandall, Andrew Vedder, and Harry Webber. That's 41 names. These cadets earned the district medal for winning the New Jersey, the ROTC Area 4 Academic, Athletic, and Drill Championships in February. Now let me tell you a little bit about what that involves. First of all, the ROTC Area 4 is approximately 60 NJROTC units within the borders of Maine to the bottom of Delaware and west through Pennsylvania. 15 units from Area 4 qualified to compete in the Area 4 Championship by finishing at the top of previously-qualified meets throughout the A4 area. The National NA4 Championship competition consists of eight events: color guard, athletics, armed regulation drill, armed exhibition drill, unarmed exhibition drill, unarmed regulation drill, academics, and personnel inspection. This group placed first in five of the eight competitions, and since points are like golf in that the lowest scorer is victor... And since points are like golf, in that the lowest scorer is victorious, Coltsneck ROTC's program finished with a dominating score of seventeen when the second-place team finished with a score of thirty-nine. So I want to congratulate all of our ROTC cadets for their Area Four Championship. Come on down, start getting your medals. Alright, our next recognition is also for perfect SATs. I'd like to ask the following students to come down. Nicole Abalik, Kayla Mostater, Sabrina Schnurr, Calvin Lou, Christopher Greco, and Swati Gayan. Come on down, please, in the six. Nicole is a junior. She earned an eight hundred in writing. Kayla is a junior, earned an eight hundred in writing. Sabrina is a junior, earned an eight hundred in writing. Chris is a senior, earned an eight hundred in reading. And he will be attending either NYU or USC next year. I guess he's got to decide which coast he wants to stay on. Swati had an eight hundred in reading and writing. She's a senior. She's deciding between Johns Hopkins, Rutgers, and George Washington. Calvin is a junior, and he has earned an eight hundred in reading, writing, and mathematics. Alright, I am now going to turn the program over to our CKA, Mr. Rick Arneau.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I would first like to recognize two of our DECA members. So it's Lauren Calderaro and Natalie Schultes can make their way down. DECA is an international marketing association that provides learning opportunities for students to gain technical and career skills in the marketing, finance, accounting, hospitality, and management fields. DECA prepares students for college and careers by providing programs that integrate into classroom instruction, which connects our students to our local businesses and the community. Competitions are held at regional, state, and national levels to showcase the talents of the DECA members. Many of our CNHS students are advanced from the regional competitions to the state competitions to the national competitions which are approaching, but two placed in first in their state event. Senior Lauren Calderaro placed first in the Principles of Marketing competition, where Lauren competed in a role play about the principles of marketing where she combined all the performance indicators necessary to win her event. She has a passion for marketing and plans on studying food marketing when she leaves Coltsneck. She remains undecided in what school she will attend next fall. Junior Natalie Schultes placed first in the Hospitality and Tourism Research Paper Event. She dedicated her free time to writing a thirty-page research paper based on her plan to decrease employee disengagement in Burger King restaurants. She also has, she had to present the plan to a panel of judges. Her efforts earned her top placement in her category. Congratulations to both Lauren and you. I'll move on to athletics. At this time, I'd like to call Frankie Tagliatieri down in front. Frankie is the 2015-2016 Gatorade Player of the Year for girls soccer in New Jersey. The Gatorade... The Gatorade State Player of the Year Award winners are evaluated and selected on the basis of three criteria. The first, athletic achievement. That includes success made at the club, national, or international levels of competition and standout performances in their respective sports. Also included is statistical production, honors, skillset evaluation, leadership ability, overall impact on a team's success, and a historical context of accomplishments. The second category, academic excellence. This includes a review of GPA and class rank, SAT scores, ACT scores, academic honors, and distinctions. The third is exemplary character. Overall sportsmanship during competitions, and membership, and participation in positive activities that demonstrate commitment to character and community. This award is given to only one player in the state, and these winners are eligible for the Gatorade National Player of the Year Award in their respective sport. I believe that comes out in the mid-mid. Coach Phillips said of Frankie, "She is very humble and a total team player." If you listen to any of her interviews, she never uses the word "I," only "we." Her work ethic is like no other player in the history of Coltsneck soccer. She has a great family and an incredible support network, and she flat-out loves the game of soccer. Congratulations to Frankie on this impressive achievement.
Just to add to that, she's also currently playing on the Junior Olympic, let's see, the U-17, is it Frankie? Is it U-17? And just check out YouTube and check out the four goals she scored in a recent game in that game, just as a little aside.
I would like to ask Coach Jim Schlens to come down to help present the next group of awards, as well as the Coltsneck High School Boys Indoor Track Team can make their way down. Any of those members that are here. The 2015-2016 Coltsneck High School Boys Indoor Track Team captured the Central Jersey Group Three and overall Group Three Championships this year. Members of the team include Dean Rayner, Pat Bowen, Zach Zipken, Rick Sommer, Troy Bass, Nick Nager, Ryan Tompkins, Pat Whalen, Farav Sindhu, Noah Kelly, Brian Chahansky, Gavin McDonald, Jordan Brannen, Anthony Russo, Alex Austin, John Miller, Kevin Berry, Dan Cheptuk, Earl Tanker, John Pezalante, Rob Shandall, and Liam Perkinson. Individual achievements were made by Junior Ryan Tompkins, who is the Group Three High Jump Champion. He's six feet, six inches. Junior Jordan Brannen, who is the Group Three 3200-Meter State Champion and the Meet of Champions 3200-Meter State Champion. Last but not least, I'd like to congratulate Coach Jim Schlens for being awarded the Short Conference Coach of the Year. Congratulations to Coach Schlens, his staff, and the entire 2015-2016 Boys Indoor Track Team. I would like to ask that Coach Lupacola and Steve Janarola make their way down to the front. As well as the Coltsneck High School Boys Basketball Team. The 2015-2016 Coltsneck High School Boys Basketball Team won the Central Jersey Group Four Championship. Members of the team include Hoyt Daniels, Kyle Gordon, Jordan DeGroot, Tom O'Reilly, Brandon Yetko, Khalid Mustafa, Chris Aquinas, Brendan Clark, Brandon Dennis, Ronnie Anderson, Robbie Hill, Ben Boslin, Dan Gaines, Zachary Album, Sabour Produce, and managers Brianna FitzHenry and Amanda Bar. The Boys Basketball Team had an outstanding season, finishing with a record of twenty-three wins and five losses with a 12-2 record in the B-North Division. The highlight of the season came with a buzzer beater at home against District Row and Freehold Township. Both teams fought hard in the back-and-forth contest, down a point. Brendan Clark took an eight-foot baseline jumper to put the Cougars up by one as time expired. The Windgate Coltsneck High School its first boys' basketball state title in school history. Individual honors went to Hoyt Daniels, who was named to the First Team by the Asbury Park Press, named to the First Team All-Shore by Shore Sports Network, First Team All-Shore. He was named Asbury Park Press B-North Player of the Year. Sports Shore Network named him B-North Player of the Year and the Short Conference Coaches Player of the Year. So the Short Conference did that as well. Congratulations to Coach Pacola, his staff, and the entire 2015-2016 Boys Basketball Team. I would like to recognize two coaches that are not, were not able to make it. Brett Jankos, who's our wrestling coach. Our wrestling team has been on the up. Since I've been there, it's just been getting better and better. Coach Jankos was named District 21 Coach of the Year. And our athletic trainer, Eric Nussbaum, was yesterday inducted into the Hall of Fame, the Coaches Hall of Fame for New Jersey. So Eric Nussbaum was with us. He was working on our life, so. So congratulations to them as well. Congratulations. Congratulations to all those who are being honored tonight. She's very, very proud of your accomplishments. That concludes the district medals for Coltsneck High School. Thank you.
I'd like to call up representatives from Freehold High School. Mr. George.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just let everybody kind of get settled before I start. Again, I echo the sentiments of everybody who has come up here before me. And congratulations. And our recognition from Freehold High School for this particular evening of medals is all focused on some pretty extraordinary academic achievements. I would like Angeli Robit and Tanushi Obteje to come up to the front, please. I'm not sure if Tanushi was going to be able to be here, but I knew that Angeli would be here. Angeli was a poster finalist at the Rutgers Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. There were two finalists chosen to move on from that competition at Rutgers, Angeli being one of them. She presented her MetSci, she's in our Learning Center at the Borough, she presented her junior independent research project titled "Ispanol: An Exposure and the Occurrence of Estrogen Dominance." This qualifies her for the National Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, which will be held April 27 through April 30 in Dayton, Ohio, and is sponsored by the Department of Defense. In the previous medal night here, Angeli was recognized for scoring a perfect 2400 on her SATs. Not here this evening is Tanushi, but I was told that he's doing a round of college visits and had a couple of interviews up north someplace. He won first place in the Behavioral and Social Sciences Council at the Monmouth Junior Science Symposium, and that project was titled "The Effects of Advancement in Television Media on the Originality of Ideas Developed by Young Adults." You know, these research projects are, they're pretty amazing. And the work, it's over a year's worth of work that goes in to the background research and then the actual study. So to have two of our students take first place to different institutions in two different categories was really a very honorable achievement for us and a great recognition. We also have a student accepted to participate in this summer's Governor's School of Engineering and Technology, and that would be Rahas Karajadala. Is Rahas here this evening? And a real recognized honor because the letter that I got as the principal of the school about the Governor's School. And I know that as we move on this evening, there's going to be other students from other high schools recognized for the Governor's Schools. And the competition was very keen this year. And I know that's something that they say all the time, or you think they say that all the time. But no, there was really a disclaimer to the principals that this competition was really pretty intense this year. So congratulations to our student who will be going on. Rahas also had a perfect score on this math, math SAT. We had a number of students who scored perfectly on one or more sections of the SAT. Victoria Lu, if I call your name, if you could come forward. Victoria Lu, perfect score on the reading section of the SAT. Ilaseti and Raj Mayrow, perfect score on reading and the writing section of the SAT. National Merit finalist and perfect score on the math and reading section of the SAT, Harsha Nandwada. Okay, they told me that they were taking time to visit, and I guess they are. National Merit finalist and perfect score on the math and writing sections of the SAT, Chevonne Nagus Warren. Perfect score on the reading and writing section of the SAT, Jenny Cow. Jenny. Some people think I'm inventing bunches of names here. Perfect score on the math and the writing section of the SAT, Gabriella Brick, Sharu Vias, and LaShaw. Perfect score on the reading section of the SAT, Amisha Dada, Ryan Kim, and Drew Magdal. Perfect score on the math section of the SAT, Karith Ashok, Sophia Catwanu, Tessa Catwanu, Justin Chen, Jack Bates, Brian DiLeonardis, Richard Gao, Nikita Jacktiani, Ryan Kim, Albert Ku, William Lee, Kyle Rodriguez, and Alexis Yu. So congratulations to these young people. You know, their academic performance at our school also emulates what they were able to do on the SAT. They're really outstanding, very dedicated students, and contribute to our school community in a variety of other ways in that second half of the school day as well. So congratulations.
Nicole Halton, please come up and accept your award. We'd also like to recognize some students from the State FCC LA State Leadership Conference. The following students and advisors were recognized, please come on down. Samantha Widmer, Deavion Bond, Gabriella Moreira, Jessica Blair, Donia Osman, and Ms. Patricia Campbell and Emily Black. Samantha Widmer was awarded Gold in Reinventing Spaces. Deavion Bond was awarded Gold in Reinventing Spaces. Gabriella Moreira was awarded Gold in Toys That Teach. Jessica Blair was awarded Gold in Toys That Teach. Donia Osman was awarded Gold in Storybook Ethics. Also, our advisors, Ms. Patricia Campbell and Ms. Emily Black, were recognized for the largest growth in membership in our New Jersey region at the State FCC LA Competition. Congratulations. I would just like to congratulate all the medal winners this evening, and thank the Board of Ed, our superintendent, for having us here tonight. Thank you, and have a great night. Thank you, Mr. Longo. Now I'd like to call up Dr. Angelo Zee from Manalton High School.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson, and thank you to the Board of Education and the Central Office Administration for supporting and recognizing our schools and our students throughout the school year. Additionally, I want to congratulate all of tonight's district medal recipients. To begin, I'm going to start with the students who achieved perfect scores on one or more sections of the SAT. I'll ask you to come, all come down here once. Heather Berger, Raymond Costa, Aditya Kumar, and David Oigenblatt. Heather achieved a perfect score in both Writing and Mathematics. Raymond achieved a perfect score in both Reading and Mathematics. Aditya achieved a perfect score in Reading, and I did not see David come down, but he achieved a perfect score in Mathematics. Come on in, get your medals. We have two other students, Harish Sarabani Kumar and Barav Singh, also get perfect scores in Mathematics, but they could not be here this evening. At this time, I would like to ask Maxwell LeBrond and Rebecca Gravdenovsky to come on down. Gravdenovsky? Max and Rebecca have been selected from a very talented pool of applicants to participate in the Summer's Governor's School of Engineering and Technology at Rutgers University. Mrs. Jules spoke about this a little bit, I just want to mention that the Governor's School takes place from June 26 until July 22. So they will be going to school for four weeks in the summertime to learn more mathematics and science, which any student that does that, whether they've been selected or not, deserves another round of applause. You're good, come get your medals. Next up is Ariel Rakubitsky. Ariel was the winner of the 2015 Congressional App Challenge for high school students in New Jersey's sixth congressional district. Ariel designed an app full of students, it's a crowdfunding platform for educational institutions, and his app will be on display in the Capitol Building throughout the remainder of this year. Additionally, Congressman Frank Malone came one morning to give Ariel the reward and spent about three hours at our school, talking to our students and answering questions. It was a great morning, and we owe it to Ariel. Ariel, thank you. Can John Valerio please come down? Hi, John. John is not only representing Manalton High School tonight, he's also representing the Monmouth County Vocational School District. John took first place in the Interviewing Skills category at the Health Occupation Students of America Regional Competition for New Jersey. The competition was designed for students to develop and to refine the skills necessary to obtain employment. Nice job, John. To that John Fogin sir, usually in the hallways he just says, "Hi, Mr. Principal, how are you doing?" Next up is Tarung Gunthwal. Manalton High School is proud to have three finalists in the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Program this year, and Tarung is one of them. Tarung's PSAT scores placed him in the top 1% of the approximately 1.5 million students who take the PSAT annually. I would also say that Tarung, and I'm not exaggerating here, Tarung is one of the top physics students in the country, and he will be going to the University of Chicago next school year to continue his studies. They didn't see her. Is Ahili Chodgy here this evening? Yes, Ahili, come on down. Mrs. Jules also mentioned the Monmouth Junior Science Symposium. Ahili is only a sophomore, but Ahili won first place in the Health and Medicine Poster category for her work titled "Reducing..." Oh, "Rescuing Autism-Like Behaviors in Hippocampal Development in Fragile Ex-Mice by Activating Protein Kinase C Epsilon." Nice job, Ahili. I'm glad I was a science teacher. Last up, before Mr. Heine comes, is Brianna Mayoro. Brianna?
We've also heard about FCC LA from Mrs. Higling, but Brianna won first place gold in the Windows of Fashion Competitive Event at this year's Leadership Conference. Students in this event researched current fashion trends to be displayed in a three-dimensional window display and an artistic collage. The Windows of Fashion Project addresses fashion forecasting and projected fashion trends. Also, Bri helped me this past school year create our Teacher of the Year video, and has been a huge help to me personally in my position as principal, so thank you, Bri.
Now I will hand it over to our supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. John Heine.
Good evening. In addition to those students that Dr. Angelo Zee has already mentioned, we would like to also recognize those members of our music program that have been nominated to the All-Shore Symphonic Band. Now, I would just please recognize the following recipients, as I call your name, please come to the front of your audience. Antonio Mora on percussion, Matthew Meisner on trombone, Carlos Orda on trumpet, Stephen Plattman also on trumpet, and most notably, a four-year recipient of the award. Gentlemen, please. As Mr. McAvoy stated, the process for this honor requires nominees to be recommended by both their principal and band director, and to compete against other accomplished musicians in the Shore Conference. Also receiving recognition but unable to be here tonight are Thomas Marshall and Justin McGurk. Congratulations to you all. And lastly, I would like to recognize junior wrestler Ronnie Guida. Ronnie, come on down. Ronnie was the District 21 Tournament Wrestling Champion at 152 pounds. In addition to this accomplishment, he also had an excellent season as a junior, he wrestled 33 in five overall. Ronnie, congratulations. That concludes Manalton's awards.
Just before Mr. Sampson comes back out, Max LeBrond, who's got into Governor's School, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, also got a perfect score on his SATs and Mathematics.
I'd like to call Mr. Boylan, representative from Marlboro High School. How the whole school goes last, I'm sorry. You'll go first in the spring. I promise.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education and Mr. Sampson for holding us this night to congratulate our students here on all their accomplishments. And I'd also like to congratulate all the students out there on your achievements this past winter. And at this time, before I give the floor to Mr. Ryden, I'd like to recognize a couple of students from Marlboro High School on achieving perfect scores on one or two parts of the SATs. Our first will be Tyler Mercer, Tyler. Unfortunately, Tyler is not here tonight, but he did receive a perfect score in both reading and math. Our next recipient was Rowan Faric, Rowan. Rowan received a perfect score in both reading and mathematics. Congratulations, Rowan. And our next recipient is Rachel Zadd, who received a perfect score in all three parts, reading, math, and writing, and is also a National Merit Scholarship finalist. Rachel? Unfortunately, Rachel was absent from school today. So at this time, Mr. Ryden?
All right, good evening. Our first recipient is David Lund, and he could not attend tonight, but David won the New Jersey Natural Gas Conserve to Preserve Kids and Conservation Video Contest. It was a project in Mr. Warren's film class. Their video featured three energy superheroes that were charged with protecting the resources at Marlboro. This is the second year in a row that David has won this award, so I'd like to accept that on his behalf. Next, I'd like to call up Jessica Manzah and Jacqueline Carlin. These girls won the Protect Me With Three. It was a video competition to create a commercial or poster to encourage vaccinations. They did a video on the influenza virus. Next, I'd like to call up Jennifer Franklin. Jennifer, along with two other students, Jennifer Pan and Nihya Anagiri, were our FCC LA Gold Medal place, first-place winners for entrepreneurship. The team took first place in the state earning a gold medal. They got a $1,000 scholarship, which is renewable for up to $4,000 for four years, and they earned a spot to represent the state of New Jersey at the National Leadership Conference in San Diego. And now to the athletic side, I'd like to introduce Jimmy Rush. He's actually not here tonight, he's at his practice for his club team. Jimmy was our first-team All-Shore for Swimming. He was the 100-yard freestyle Shore Conference Champion, and he's actually going to be attending Bucknell next year for swimming. Next, come on down, Kwaku.
Kwaku Mipaza is a junior at Marlboro High School. He is a member of our winter track team, and he is the Shore Conference Champion in the 55-meter high curls. And last, I'd like to call down Mr. Michael DeFere. Mike is our District 21 Champion out of Marlboro High School at the 145-pound weight class. He has a record of 44 and 10. He is a junior. What's awesome about Mike is he had the almost career-ending injury as a sophomore, and he wasn't able to wrestle his entire sophomore year, so to come back and be a district champion is just very impressive. And that concludes Marlboro High School. These girls won the Protect Me with Three. It was a video competition to create a commercial or poster to encourage vaccinations. They did a video on the influenza virus. Next, I'd like to call up Jennifer Franklin. Jennifer, along with two other students, Jennifer Pan and Mija Anna Giri, were our FCCLA Gold Medal First Place winners for entrepreneurship. The team took first place in the state, earning a gold medal. They got a $1,000 scholarship, which is renewable for up to $4,000 for four years, and they earned a spot to represent the state of New Jersey at the National Leadership Conference in San Diego. And now, to the athletic side, I'd like to introduce Jimmy Rush. He's actually not here tonight. He is at his practice for his club team. Jimmy was our first-team All-Shore for Swimming. He was the 100-yard freestyle Shore Conference Champion, and he's actually going to be attending Bucknell next year for swimming. Next, come on down, Kwaku. Kwaku Mipaza is a junior at Marlboro High School. He is a member of our winter track team, and he is the Shore Conference Champion in the 55-meter high curls. And last, I'd like to call down Mr. Michael DeFary. Mike is our District 21 Champion out of Marlboro High School at the 145-pound weight class. He has a record of 44 and 10. He is a junior. What's awesome about Mike is he had the almost career-ending injury as a sophomore, and he wasn't able to wrestle his entire sophomore year. So, to come back and be a district champion is just very impressive. And that concludes Marlboro High School. Now, I'd like to call up Mr. Braverman from Howe High School.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Thank you for your patience. Since the last of the people are walking out, we can say that we saved the best for the last, of course. I too would like to thank the Board of Education, our Superintendent, Mr. Sampson, and Central Office for allowing us to do this this evening. It's a great honor to be up here to recognize such incredible people. Before I turn it over to Mr. Meehan, I would like to recognize two students who had an 800 or a perfect score on their SATs in certain sections. First, I don't know if she's here. Dana Altis received a perfect score in writing two times. Kwaku, please. And for a perfect score in math, Gabby Nuzzi. And as Mrs. Jewell would say, I'll turn it over to Mr. Meehan for what we do after school.
Good evening. We have many medals to give out. You can see, we have a couple teams who won. First off, I'd like to see if we have our All-State Chorus Group here. Anyone here from All-State Chorus? Come on up. All the students here were selected to New Jersey State All-State Chorus. We have 24 of them, I believe. There's only four, five of us. We're all busy singing right now. I'd like to announce their names. Vincent DiSeno, Lindsay Chairman, Leah Sandow, Emily Boyle, David Sherman, Olivia Hanwall, Jordan Kerry Mitchell, Audrey Chu, Emily Bennett, Leanna Santa Anna, Lauren Carter, Matthew Gonzella, Michael Olson, Katie Langin, Sophia Ludenoff, Brandon Wetherway, Joshua Ricklin, Jason Skabinski, Hannah Burke, Natalie Lorenzo, Sophia Geiser, Brianna Stowe, and Michaela Long. I'd also like to add, on an individual note, Leanna Santa Anna was selected as a winner of the National Young Arts Foundation Competition out of 12,000 applicants across the country. She was selected for singing and acting submission. She received an all expenses paid trip to Miami for a week of workshops and mentoring by artists such as Rosie Perez and Tony Yasback. Congratulations to All-State Chorus. At this time, could I please have Mr. Lamaldi join us up here on the desk? And if you could bring with him his All-Shore Symphonic Band. The following students were nominated to All-Shore Symphonic Band. Dan Snow, Justin Perez, John Lamaldi, Brianna Weinman, Megan Smith, Samantha Chibaro, Joseph Dwyer, Katie Ferraro, Olivia Ferraro, Kevin Henson, Crystal Courthouse, Rowan Malik, Leah Klein, Lorenzo Bedore, Michael Fiorillo, Dina Brown, and Antonio Vinditti. And John Moore for All-Shore Jazz. Congratulations. At this time, could I please have Coach Wetzel? If he's there to join us in place. If you could rail on your girls' bowling team. As the ladies set up, girls' bowling this year, they were our Shore Conference Central B Champions. They were also our girls' bowling Central Jersey Group Four Champions. Congratulations, girls. Girls' bowling team, Olivia Vasco, Samantha Chibaro, Gianna Dubu, Amanda Dornar, Madison Gibson, Champagne Hill, Jessica Kaiser, Zoe Mandamba, Laura Palillo, Alexis Franton, and Nicole Wetzel. Congratulations, ladies, on Central Jersey Group Four Champions. At this time, could I please have Coach Gagliano join us in place?
This boys come down to get lined. 2015, 2016, Howe Racing Wrestling Program went 26 and 5. They were first place in the Falls Bowl Tournament, second place in the New Ghouls, second place in the Chase Life Invitational. They were Shore Conference finalists. They were number one in the A-North Conference 11 years straight now. They're first-place District 21 Champions, Central Jersey Group Four-Five Champions, and New Jersey Group Five Finalists. Final ranking, they're seventh in Monmouth County in Star Ledger, third in the Shore Aspery Park Press, and ranked 13th in the state according to Star Ledger. We'll start by weight class. At 106 pounds, we had Dorgi Dietrich, ninth grader, District 21 Champion, third in the regions, top 12 in the state of New Jersey. At 106, 10th grader, Jesse Lipson. At 113, Paus Lindor, 10th grader, District 21 Champion, second in the regions, top 12 in the state of New Jersey. Eric Negaro, 10th grader, 120 pounds. Nick Chiacha, 12th grader, captain, District 21 runner-up. Eli Orford, congratulations. Eli Orford, 10th grade. Joe Eck, 12th grade, 126 pounds. Daniel Estesito, 10th grader. At 132 pounds, Anthony Gagliano, senior, captain, District 21 Champion, third in the regions, state qualifier, and accumulated 121 career wins. Ninth grader, Evan Richard, fourth grade, junior. At 138 pounds, Chris Lindemann, captain, District 21 Champion, region champion, top 12 in the state of New Jersey, ended his career with 113 wins. 11th grader, John Freeman. At 145 pounds, Peter D., senior, captain, third in the districts. Nick Sobasky, 11th grader, at 152 pounds. Freshman, Kristen Murphy. 12th grader, Cameron Aish, senior, Brandon Maurice. At 160 pounds, Frankie Anaros, senior, second in the districts. Junior, Brandon Dulceau. At 170 pounds, Jack Kurt, senior. Lenroy Vassil, senior. 182 pounds, Zach Barnes, senior. Chris DiMarco, sophomore. At 195 pounds, Ryan Barter, senior. Paul Garcia, senior. Dan Carvahal, senior. Jamad Krippen, sophomore. At 220 pounds, Eric Cassian, junior, District 21 Champ, Region Champ, and Eric also placed eighth in the state finals of Atlantic City. Nice job, guys. Sophomore, Mike Sinidos. Sophomore, Matt Masutis. And at heavyweight, junior Jake Nash, junior Sean Maguire, and sophomore Big Richie Christie. Congratulations, Coach. Congratulations, team. Nice job. At this time, we have we have Coach Dodds. Coach Dodds or Coach Pio, please join us up here in the desk. If you could bring the rest of the team with you. Come on up, guys. As the girls set up, this year, 2015, 2016, cheer team went down. They were our cheer, all music, large division, and grand champions, state champions for state of New Jersey. They also went down to Atlanta, and they won the cheer sport national championship as well. Congratulations, girls. Our seniors, Samantha Barberi, Valerie Sinelli, Cory Fink, Allison Keogh, Gabrielle Nuzzi, and Zoe Rosenberch. And Zoe Sloan, sorry, Zoe, you want to next page? Juniors, Jenna Body, Danielle Divani, Nicolette Mateo, Brielle Sumulo, and Erica Skasevic. Sophomores, Emily Burke, Morgan Diaz, Tracy Erickson, Madison Lopez, Leanna McGee, Natalie McGee, Jacqueline Nuzzi, and Paige Rissman. And for our freshmen, Amanda Bailey, Jacqueline Brooks, Nicole Gervasi, Morgan Gonzalez, Lexi Kukka, Bianca Miller, Catherine Perry, Angelina Pesky, and Hannah Rosenberch. Thank you, ladies, and congratulations. Is Neve Hayes with us this evening? Neve wasn't sure she'd be able to make it this evening. I'll accept Neve's award for her. Neve Hayes was our South...sorry. Neve Hayes was our South Jersey Group Four and overall group champion in the 32 meter. She did a great job. She's a junior. Looking forward to seeing her run in the remainder of the spring. Looking forward to coming back next year. I'd like to congratulate Neve Hayes, 3200 meter state champion. Mr. Sampson, that is it for Howe High School.
All right, I know that everyone is eagerly anticipating the actual formal business of the board, but we will take a two-minute recess. Thank you all, and congratulations to all our winners. Just a few other items I'd like to leave you brought into mind. We have a very successful, in the heroin form, April 6th, the quarterly district field regional high school district, Senator Jennifer Beck, all of this, Monmouth County Sheriff Sean Ollivier, as well as Acting Monmouth County Prosecutor Christopher Aguiricioni. We have a couple hundred people in the audience. We also brought out a number of student clubs as well, and the numbers are very real with the heroin epidemic, not just in Monmouth County, but throughout the state of New Jersey, particularly with that 18 to 25 age range. So, we thought it was an appropriate evening. It was well-attended by a number of local officials as well from all of our various community services. It was a terrific evening. A lot of work went into working together, but we're very happy with the turnout and the results. We also, our members of our administrative team have conducted a couple tours of the Bellworks facility in Hocktown. They're sort of reimagining workspaces within the Bellworks, which are a large part of them is the old Bruce's building, and they're looking to build just a real different conceptual framework for how businesses and small shops and such sort of operate in this huge space. We think that there are a lot of potential opportunities there for our students for internships and things of that nature. So, we've coordinated a couple visits over there, and we're looking forward to hopefully some really unique partnerships out there. If they can move forward on what they're conceiving there, it would be a very interesting site and some real opportunities for students to get into what the modern workforce is evolving into. Just a note, we applied to and were accepted into New Jersey Innovate, which is sort of a statewide version of partnership and collaboration between various innovative school districts. We actually waited until the third cohort, until we applied, just to see that it was up and running in school districts where there were some violent partnerships there. So, we attended our first meeting of that a few weeks back, and one of the positive takeaways from that group is that they partner districts up across the state of New Jersey. They try to match in the school districts that are very different from your own. So, we're looking forward to that collaboration. We also, this evening, and she's not here tonight, but we are accepting Kathy Cowell's retirement. Kathy is a longtime assistant principal here at Howe High School. She was going to be here this evening, but her daughter is literally in labor as we speak with her first grandchild. Acceptable reason not to be here. But we just really want to wish Kathy all the best. She's an absolute sweetheart. You know, her retirement letter said she's moving on to greener pastures. Those of you who know her know that she's very involved with caring for and tending horses, does a lot of therapy for folks, her horses, and she's going to be moving into that. She's had a terrific record here at the Field Regional High School District, and I'm sure all of them have. And one other, though, just an update. Today was the first day of park testing in the district. We have a, as the President of the Guard State Coalition, have a conference call tomorrow with some of the DOE officials, just once again to follow up on a ongoing conversation we had over the park assessment. Our numbers across the district are seeing some significant refusal rates in certain high schools and very few refusals in other high schools. So, it's a real divergent process again this year. Again, I think that will really make some determinations of our data from that assessment difficult for us, and we'll be monitoring the testing as we move forward over the next couple of weeks that will be designated as testing days.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Next, we have committee reports. I think we only have one, that is the Policy Committee. I think Pete was telling at that?
I was. I was there. I didn't know I was listening to report.
Do you have notes?
I attended my first policy meeting on Wednesday evening. I had a feeling you'd call me.
I have the list, so I'm cheating. So, we met on Wednesday evening and went through a number of policy changes, and they were, a lot of them were very minor language changes around public participation in board meetings. They're on the first read, recording at board meetings. Health and physical education, there have been some changes to the standards there. So, that results in us abolishing the existing policy around health and physical education and adopting the new policy. And for those of you who didn't know what went into the health and physical education curriculum, they're sort of along. curriculum, there's sort of a long tree list of about 30 real significant state requirements that are part of that. Some changes with our physical forms for athletic competition and what's required there. Again, just mandated divisions, resident, non-resident students, health services. High school graduation, of course, that continues to change as they change the different tests that have different cut scores for graduation through the class of 2021. Outstanding food service charges really is related to parents. More geared toward elementary schools, but certainly potentially applicable to us. If you see a, if you see a student who is coming to school regularly without any lunch or without any financial means of obtaining lunch, you have an obligation to report that to Child Services. And perhaps the biggest change in terms of policy is that the acceptable use now of medical marijuana in schools in New Jersey, that has been legislated into law. The Department of Education has not adopted any regulations at this point in time to really guide us on that. However, if you read the policy itself, there are so many caveats to the, to medical marijuana, very specific policy targeting, I would imagine, a very specific population in particular, students that may have cancer. And it has to be administered by a parent under the supervision of, you know, with a school official present. So that is, we are, we're putting that policy up for a first read because now that it has become law, we would rather have something on the books to guide us in terms of any of our decision-making, rather than to wait for Department of Education regulations. Because that may be a very long wait. I don't think they've come up with all the regulations to prohibit law from 2011 yet. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we don't want to wait on that. So those are, those are up for the first read. Any questions to that, to those, or?
The only thing I want to interject is to say, because I was an English teacher, but what they teach in health and physical education today is amazing. And I had children presented with health issues, we had to teach them art. And it's a very interesting way to see what they have to do with this, 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 this health classes today. Anything from assets, China, donations, everyone, your favorites, and still, really amazing.
That's extensive. Okay, next we have public participation. No one signed up, considering. Saying no one, move on to the open. Yes, we have three agenda items. The first will be G11 and personnel. Whereas the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education seeks to provide all students with educational structures capable, capable of providing students the best educational experience consistent with the Jersey state law and board policy. Whereas the board has received certain information regarding actions and statements made by employee number 9397, which creates concerns about his or her ability to instruct students consistent with the board policies, regulations, and known expectations. Whereas employee number 9397's alleged actions and statements are deemed by the superintendent to be a potential deviation from normal physical or mental health, be resolved at the Board of Education upon recommendation of superintendent and consistent with NJSA DTA:16-2. Nearby requires employee number 9397 to undergo a complete medical and physical examination. We also have personnel item G12. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education hereby approves the termination of employee number 6784, effective April 11, 2016. We also have personnel item G13. Be resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education hereby approves the termination of employee number 7609, also effective April 11, 2016. Okay, I'd like to take the agenda in one shot. That would go from G1 through K3.
Come on, shoot.
Second. Second. Discussion. Mr. Acetol?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, put on the stain of K1.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mr. Coroll?
Yes.
Mrs. Snackhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavitt?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to move into...
I'd just like to take a moment to congratulate Linda Scanlon, who's been approved as the new Director of Transportation. Linda's been a longtime employee, has done great work for us, Mr. Boyce, myself, Sharp. I feel very confident in Linda's capabilities and guiding the Transportation Department, which is an incredibly difficult position. Congratulations and condolences, Linda.
Next, old business, new business. Under new business, I just want to second what Mr. Sampson said about Kathy. I've dealt with her for a long time. She's an excellent teacher and a really good administrator. And on another note, I want to congratulate Howe High School on an incredibly intelligent move, making Shannon Mayrowe the head female soccer coach. Shannon was one of my last players that I coached, a great ACC player for Virginia Tech. It's going to be nothing but positive for the girls here, so I wish them all the best.
Yes.
Okay, to the other new business, saying none. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So shall he say. So shall it be written.